Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board meeting. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If you can rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Correspondence, Brian.
I believe, do we have any correspondence, Mrs. Moore?
No.
Explains why I can't find it.
All right. Good news, commendations. Brady, go ahead.
All right. So recently, over winter break, letters for NHS acceptance got sent out to students who were accepted, of course, and the induction for that will be on January 16th. Poetry at Loud is happening right now in our English classes. So most classes are having students present just a poem in class, but then tomorrow, or not tomorrow, Wednesday after school, students are able to compete in the statewide competition, and the winner of that will go on to the regional and then, I believe, national. Thursday, we will be hosting what is known as GACIMF, the Granite State Invitational Music Festival, where music students from all, all music groups will be coming from all different schools and will be performing and practicing all day here, and then they'll have a concert at 7 o'clock in our theater. And then midterms fall in the week of the 21st to the 24th.
Great. Thank you, Brady. All right, Ms. Bean.
All right. It's a little light tonight. To activate the unit on the Industrial Revolution, our World History students attended a field trip. I don't know how to pronounce this. It's at the Songus Industrial History Center in Lowell, Massachusetts. Students got to wove their own cloth on hand looms to understand better the time-consuming process of producing cloth by hand. They used primary source quotes and historical artifacts to compare the experiences of workers in the early 19th century in Europe and in the United States, in the industrial north and agricultural south, and then contrasted those experiences with those of today's international workers. They got to inspect a cotton gin and power loom to identify how changes in technology affected work on farms, plantations, and in factories in Europe, the United States, and the world. They toured the museum and analyzed the technological advancements in the weaving industry and listened to firsthand accounts of factory workers' experiences. And then they toured the weave room to view mechanized looms in action and learned about the dangerous work conditions. Our school-to-work life skills program just got approved with a new work site by the Department of Labor. It's the Bowman Place, which is an assisted living and memory care facility. Students will be working with Grundale Dining Services. This opportunity will allow these students to work in a restaurant setting and gain work-related skills in kitchen and dining services. Peer outreach, it comes again. Now they've completed what they've done. So Peer Outreach is proud to announce that Maddox Turk delivered over 25 stockings to adults and nine individually wrapped presents to kids. The gifts were given just prior to the holiday school break. The stockings were filled with practical holiday gifts for the adults at the Farnham Center, a Manchester drug and alcohol rehabilitation setting. They got brushes, deodorant, socks, toothbrush, toothbrushes and toothpaste. And the nine individually holiday, individual holiday presents were specifically purchased for the kids of the parents at the Farnham Center, which included age-appropriate games, sports, craft activities, and puzzles. The Peer Outreach members helped wrap and stuff the stockings, and co-advisors, Sharice Salter and John Webb assisted with purchasing the gifts. The students of Peer Outreach are meeting this week to outline the themes for the next few months. They're hoping to address mental health awareness and drug and alcohol prevention and making good choices with and for their fellow peers. They're planning more morning events, like a pancake breakfast for students, and also anticipating handing out hot chocolate in the weeks ahead. And that is my good news for Goffstown High School.
Thank you, Ms. Bean. Mr. Davis.
All right. So for Mountain View, the entire 7th grade attended the Christmas Carol on December 19th, just before we went on the holiday break. The entire grade did an amazing job, showed a lot of pause pride, and we actually had a student that was performing during that performance, which was really exciting for the students to see her up on stage. I wanted to take just a second to highlight a couple of people from Mountain View. The first one is Bobby Glenn, who kind of oversees the Flex One program. He's very dedicated to the program. He took it over in 2022. He's brought a lot of life to this program. He spends a lot of his own time coming up with projects and ideas for those students. He gets them out throughout the school. They run a coffee shop on Wednesdays where they bring around coffee and snacks to staff. They run a popcorn on Friday. And he doesn't just focus on the academics for those students. You now see those students down the hall where they're getting high fives from other students, a lot of verbal interaction between the students and his students, as well as the staff as well. Just a lot of positive smiles on the faces of the kids, all interacting together, which is wonderful to see. And the other one I wanted to highlight was the makerspace in our library. Our librarian, Ms. O'Reilly, has done an amazing job kind of creating a space for students who, basically, any aspect of STEAM, so science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics, from robotics to basic art activities. I went in to start to count today, just to see how many different things there were, and there were so many, I lost track. She's got so much there for kind of any interest that students might have, and these are open to students from first thing in the morning until they close in the afternoon evening. So wonderful space, great job for the librarians to keep this space for our students. And that's kind of it for Mountain View.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Go ahead, Wendy.
And for the elementary schools, over at Bartlett, a large group of 4th graders participated in a four-week after-school art experience throughout the months of November and December. In this month, the art teacher is offering this opportunity for 3rd graders, and there'll also be another session for 4th graders. And students have been working after school to create some really wonderful art pieces. Also, the Bartlett staff would like to thank the PTA for offering monthly family events at Bartlett. They've had several movie nights, story nights, bingo, cocoa with Santa, and many more. So a special thank you to our PTA. Over at Maple Avenue, Mr. Demers received not one, but two pies in the face on December 20th. Two students who donated the most canned goods during the November food drive were able to blast Mr. Demers with a pie in the face. Pat's Peak Skiing started last Friday at our school, so they are hoping for a little bit of snow in the upcoming weeks. And the Maple Ab Neat and Tidy Classroom Competition begins next week, actually this week, and runs through March. Each classroom will keep their haul storage, like their backpacks, their snow pants, their boots, et cetera, neat and tidy during the day, and they'll receive a star when they do so. Classes who receive a star will be entered into a weekly drawing to earn prizes for their classroom, and they get some choice with it. Prizes include extra recess, dance parties, book swaps, and other fun options. And over at Glen Lake...
Now, Mrs. Kohler, are we supposed to be having fun at school?
We are. We are. And over at Glen Lake, students from Glen Lake created ornaments for senior citizens who participated in the Senior Lights Tour that was organized by Sergeant Jackie Pelletier from Goffstown Police. They're proud to have participated in that again this year. They've been doing it for several years, and it's a great way for our younger students to learn about the positive impact they can have on our community. Glen Lake students also enjoyed Winter Wonderland the week before break. It included games, activities, projects, and learning about different holidays that make up the season.
Nice. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commendations, good news? No one? All right. Moving on to public comment. Is there public comment tonight? You'll have to sit over here. I know.
We didn't know you were coming, Nancy. We would have had another table for you.
Oh, I know. I can hear you. Hi, Nancy, welcome.
Hi, Nancy Beederman of Austin. Sorry I've missed the last few, but I've been watching, keeping track. I budget, yikes. I thought I would update you on some right-to-know requests that I've made, just to let you, the school board, know when any taxpayer recently makes a right-to-know request, they receive a response from the superintendent immediately that will say that it will take 90 business days for a reply from administration. All but one of my right-to-know requests recently took 90 business days. The last one took about three weeks, as I had contacted the New Hampshire State Education Department about the right-to-know delays. Maybe this is something you need to look into, especially when you want to have transparency with your taxpayers. My first update is on the three books I challenged last year. I was finally notified in August that two of the books were removed from the library because of lack of infrequent circulation. I was informed that Zara's Paradise and Fun Home, a family tragic comic, were removed along with many other books. I requested the list of books that were recently removed from the GHS library. The list is 827 pages long and covered the dates from September 1st, 2023, to June 6th, I'm sorry, June 18th, 2024, which then, as I added them all up, was 5,128 books were removed from the GHS library collection because of either damage, out-of-date information, or infrequent circulation. So for anyone that is upset that I asked for two books to be removed, remember there was 5,000, over 5,000 of them removed without my request. My new question to the school board is what happened to all those books that were not damaged? Did they get thrown away? I would hope not, as that was over $50,000 worth of books. And I was being generous, just saying $10 per book. My next right-to-know request was to check on whether school district teachers stopped giving students survey questionnaires without parent guardian permission. It is against the law for education, education personnel to give students questionnaires or surveys without parent permission, RSA 18611. In the 2023-2024 school year, I asked for surveys and questionnaires that, just from surveys and questionnaires that GHS teachers gave to students, and there were about 113 pages sent back to me. That included questions to students that I thought was inappropriate. They were asking about their pronouns and their gender. Why would a teacher need to ask students this information? And what would their teacher do if the student responded differently than what was stated in their permanent school record? Would they contact the parent or guardian or keep it a secret, like other educators in New Hampshire have done recently? What is the SAU 19 policy on this, as I have not found any? On 10/21/24, I sent an email asking for the same information as last year, but I also requested that Mountain View middle school teachers be included. I received this document by November 24th, 2024, which contained 24 pages, down from 113. I was originally told this request would take 90 business days, but I believe the quick reply happened because I included the New Hampshire Department of Education in my email and stated that the previous year it only took two weeks to gather the information, and this year, for some reason, it was supposedly going to take 90 business days. If the teachers were following the law, as it seems they have done so, and I have reviewed all of them, no pronouns or gender were asked this time, then it would not take that long to gather the information. I said that in my email that four weeks should be long enough because I had added another school to the request. When I compared the documents I received from last year and this year, I'm confused that some questionnaires, such as the one for the National Honor Society Tutoring Program, weren't included this year. Is the National Honor Society no longer providing tutoring? This year, the Guidance Department's questionnaire for writing recommendations for college was included, but not last year. I know from experience that with my own children, that the Guidance Department has been using a similar form for years in order to write the recommendation. I question why the difference is. I think we need to clarify what the questionnaire or survey is with staff. My final right-to-know request was about James McKim and his employment with SAU 19. I received 299 pages of emails and documents. At first glance, I was surprised at how much Mr. McKim was pushing to survey the students, even after he was informed by administration this was against New Hampshire law. I'm still reviewing the documents and will report later as to other information that I've found, including who was included in these discussions. At present, Mr. McKim is still leading the SAU 19 parent group that meets at St. Matthew's Church once a month. They have now included students from Crispin House. At the conclusion of their last meeting, they are now going to focus on three main issues. One, safety. That includes on buses, phones, and drugs in the schools. Discipline, consequences not spelled out or given, teachers and administrators' lack of skill to administer discipline. SAU transparency, lack of teacher professionalism, swearing, and no decorum.
Nancy, it's been three minutes. Are you about done?
Yep. Two more sentences. Expired IEPs, lack of integrity in grading, grades have no merit, missing work is exempt. So just to give you a heads up as to what that parent group is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other public comment for tonight? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and we have a presentation tonight about data presentation. Do you want to introduce...
Mrs. Kohler.
Great.
Oh, Mrs. Kohler?
Yes. So this evening, each of our schools will be coming up and sharing with you the New Hampshire SAS data from last spring. We had a full presentation already at CNE, and we've significantly pared down the presentation for this evening. It's about a third of the size because this is over a two-hour presentation that we did for CNE. So each of the buildings will be talking about their data. They'll not only be sharing their New Hampshire SAS data, but they'll also be giving you a little bit of context with a second data point and sharing with you our NWEA results, which is our local assessment that we use here that's computer-based and adaptive. So it'll kind of give you two different points of reference as they're talking about their data. I'll also mention that there is a couple of slides that I added that weren't presented at CNE. Because we've been talking so much about the budget and what our budget here looks like in Goffstown, I added a slide to show our, basically, what our return on investment looks like. So us versus some other local school districts right around us to see how much they are spending per pupil and what their test results look like compared to ours. So that is an addition that I did add that CNE didn't see when I presented earlier. So at this time, I'd like to ask the elementary schools to come up, and we're actually going to start off with Mrs. Pishka. As a reminder, Mrs. Pishka took over at Bartlett this year, so she's actually presenting some data from Bartlett that she was not a part of. And Darcy Crete, the assistant principal, is here to join us, and when they're finished, we'll put things over to Bill before we invite the middle school and the high school up.
Welcome.
Heather?
Yes.
Can I ask a baseline question?
Yeah, go ahead.
When you do the, the cost per pupil, is that the, the amount that the New Hampshire uses?
Yes.
Not the actual amount, but the reported amount that's supposedly standardized?
Correct. I took it from the Department of Education website, so everything is standardized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not sure why this is not moving. There we go.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I do see a lot of faces that already heard this presentation. Thank you for sitting through it again. We'll be a little quicker, but I also want to make sure that everyone understands what they're...
You can talk to the microphone.
What they're seeing. So, as Wendy already mentioned, we'll be talking about the spring assessment, the state assessment, and our local assessment that we do each fall that we compare over time. So the first slide is talking about the spring state assessment, and what you're seeing there is, in yellow, is Bartlett's scores, and green are, those are the state scores. It shows mathematics for grade three on the left and mathematics for grade four on the right. The scores are surprisingly low, as I've reported already to CNE. The 39% for grade three makes up about 19 students that performed proficient or above, and for grade four, 14 students proficient or above out of the 49 in that grade level.
Suzanne, if I could also mention, as a reminder for the board and for the public watching at home, last year, we implemented a new mathematics program called Math in You. So clearly, we anticipated we would have a little bit of an implementation dip in grades that's common that you'll see. A lot of research studies will show you, you have an implementation dip. We've done a lot of professional development, including this past summer, with some professionals coming in and working with us to make sure that we understand the curriculum and how it's used. One of the things that we went through last year is this program is significantly more rigorous than the program Everyday Math that we had used prior. So we had to fill in a lot of gaps, and there is some materials that were on the state assessment that we did not get to when this assessment was given. So I just wanted to make sure that that, that everybody knows that. Does that, does that have an excuse for what our scores are? No, but I want everybody to understand that that is a factor that should be calculated when we're looking at our scores because of that new implementation. Thank you, Wendy.
So the next slide is English Language Arts, and similarly to math, the school scored lower than the state, yellow being Bartlett and green being the state average for proficiency. If you go to the next slide, it shows the historical data, so looking at the state assessments in grade three and four for math and English Language Arts over time. There've been ups and downs, so I would say there were years where Bartlett was equal to the state average or even slightly above. However, the last two years of low scores, consecutive years, put us in a position with the state that we are a school and need improvement. They're calling our designation "targeted support and improvement." Wendy and Darcy and I have met with people from the state, specifically around assessment and accountability, and this designation is one that the oversight is local. So Wendy will be overseeing, and Brian and obviously the board overseeing our progress as we work toward improving our scores. That's the information on the state assessment. Any questions on that part?
Suzanne, if I could also add, with the TSI designation, we actually don't have to give any plan to the state, interestingly enough. There is a designation above TSI, which is a CSI school. That is different, where you have to put in a plan with the state to talk about where you are improving your instruction to try to get your scores up. Even though we don't have to have a plan, Darcy, Suzanne, and her team have used the template that the state uses for CSI schools as the basis for creating our plan here for Bartlett. So though we don't have to use that template, we're choosing to use that template, just to be sure that we're crossing all of our Ts, dotting our Is, and we're getting, you know, where we need to be.
Go ahead, Karen. Can you give a couple of examples of some of the targeted support and improvement that you guys have thought about to help improve some of the scores?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I do plan to do...
Let me go to the left side.
Yeah. No, that's fine.
You can go to the left side now.
Yes, absolutely. So we are, we have a number of things in place, and it started back in the spring when I knew I was transitioning over. I met with their school leadership team, and obviously, there are things I, I know now, I'm learning over time, that we're also making additional adjustments. But right away, some of the things that the leadership team wanted to see was, you know, they wish to have a master schedule where there could be planning between the, the teachers within the same grade level, that was uninterrupted time, that they could work together. They were looking for, you know, just looking for some consistency with administration providing support so they can focus on teaching and less disruption in their classrooms. So we, right away, I, I had a sense for what, what they were looking for in that, more of the culture, the structure. And, you know, I'm, I'm definitely a structured person. It's, it's something I, I can envision, and, and so we've put those things in place. That's, that's really step one, and that's what's on that first, that first section. Right away, I wanted students who needed to receive additional supports besides, besides the support they're getting from their classroom teacher. I wanted that happening right away, so we jumped right in. And our next steps, things we're already doing now, we've used the most current assessments that we've been, that we've given, NWA, the local assessment being one. And then the state requires us to test students in grades one through three as dyslexia law, where we do assessment to, to determine if we have students who may be showing signs of a learning disability. So we have worked on that. We have those assessments. We've been looking at what other factors, you know, the academic data, analyzing that, behavioral data, attendance, the intervention, as I said, and then the qualities within instruction. So, you know, teacher reviews and other things, like what, are we working in isolation or are we working collaboratively? So, you know, we're, we're really shifting toward collaborative instruction and then getting a little deeper, besides just saying we're meeting together, but what's the purpose of meeting together? It's to look at student work and to determine if we're seeing success and, and what we're instructing. So that's where we're, where we're going. And most recently, we have shifted some of the intervention, where it's, it's nice that it's a small school, but one thing that we looked at closely was how often are students in their classes receiving core instruction versus supplemental support? So when students are pulled out during core content, then they're missing something that is vital to their understanding of the standards within their grade level. So we have protected the time that they're with their teacher and requested that teachers who are providing that additional support either push into the classroom during a time where kids are applying what they're learning, or they're pulling out at times where it's, it's a time that the kids in the classroom are working independently and there isn't this whole group instruction. So there are a few things where we're slowly making adjustments as we, as we look at the data.
Suzanne, can you talk a little bit, when you were at CNE, you talked about productive struggle?
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about that with the board, about something that you're, you as a staff are really focusing on?
Yes. So one thing that, as we talked about, as a staff, as we talked about the, the scores, and I, I showed them how often students aren't in class when, when they should be, the, the realization was that when we give them something to do independently, when all along in their, their school year, they've been provided support by an adult, what it creates is a lack of independence. So we're working toward increasing independence and grappling with challenges and just giving them opportunity to, to try something and then, and then come, not to swoop in and fix it, but to, you know, praise them for the things that they're trying and then to, you know, go from there, take that information and, and figure out what, what we're doing next. But the, you know, we need to reduce the amount of, and instruction that we assist students, increase the amount of time that students take actions, because as we know, active learners think about their learning, active learners think about what they need to do next, and active learners take responsibility for the learning process. So those are things that we're starting to talk about as a staff, and I think that the culture is, is good. It's solid. We have some really good structures. I think teachers have given good feedback about the opportunities they have to teach and less where there's disruption due to behavior. And I think that the climate is also, it's always been, you know, I felt very welcome when I started, and I would say that, you know, that continues, that the climate is friendly. The teachers all know the names of students even when they're not there. It's amazing to me that they, you know, it's just, it's like a family, it's a family at that school. So I think those are all good things that, that we have going for us.
Wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I don't know if you want me to talk about NWA.
Go back to, just so we can see.
Yeah. I did say to the, to the CNE group that... I did say to the, to the CNE group that the NWA testing, what you're seeing here is fall assessment over time. The, we will be doing winter NWA local assessment and we'll be doing spring as well. So I can share what we're, what growth we're making. 2024 fall assessment was done two weeks, two and a half weeks after school started for, for that first measure. And then this next one will be near the end of January. We'll, we'll work with students again. One of the things we've talked about as a staff is having kids set goals for themselves, talking about here's the range that, you know, we would want to see growth and, and talk to them about growth can happen if you do these things as an active learner, as completing an independent task. So more to come on our results from our local assessment.
I had a question.
Yeah, Scott, yeah.
Why is there, appears to be a difference between SAS testing, proficiency, et cetera, and NWA?
So the, the, NWA has its own norms.
Okay.
And, you know, our state assessment is based on the standards that the, that are, that are for our state of New Hampshire. I think that the tasks that are asked of students, of course, we, we can only see the samples, but what we know from the state assessment is it's definitely more, it's more rigorous. I mean, if you can, even looking at the state average is 50% of the state average is proficient or above. So it's, it's a, you know, it's more rigorous assessment for our students. And it tests them on standards within their grade level. NWA, if you're a student who, you start taking the test and, and you start answering questions that are more difficult, they might become more difficult, but then if you start getting things wrong, it would then adjust to, to your abilities. So the, the state test is really, these are the standards, this is what we're testing them on.
Okay.
So it's not adaptable to the student at all.
Go ahead, Lauren.
Thank you. Just a question, a comment, if I may, just, thank you. Sitting on CNE, it was very, when I saw the data at first, one of my first meetings, I was concerned, but the amount of thoughtfulness that I immediately saw out of, out of your group and really it made me feel a lot better that it, I did not get the impression that it was a, we need to increase our scores and teach to the test. It was, let's really look at where are holes, where do we need to improve, where are our learners struggling and what do we need to do to support them? And I think that's an enormous difference in some people looking to go, is this teaching to the test? Well, no, we're actually trying to support whole learners and whole students. And I love the idea of that golden hour, like protected core instruction. So I know these numbers can look scary, but in CNE, you guys did a tremendous job just going into it and saying, we're looking at big systemic changes to really address that. And that was really encouraging. And, and my, my question was, refresh my memories, the TSI designation, is that the one that if you go into the second year of a TSI designation, you turn into a CSI school? Or?
Some, some version of that.
Some version of that. I couldn't remember if it was.
But not necessarily. We, quite honestly, we couldn't get a real answer. The gentleman that we're working with at the state, I will say, is, is new to this role. He's been fantastic and very responsive to our emails and things like that, but he's still learning along with us as we go through this.
So there's been a lack of clarification from the Department of Education?
I think that he's getting information to us as he receives it. So he, like I said, they've been great about getting right back to us as we've asked questions. We actually set up a one-on-one meeting with the gentleman from the Department of Ed that's in charge of it, and he just met with Darcy, Suzanne and I on Teams to talk about some things. Because we wanted to make sure that we were doing everything we needed to do on our end so that, you know, obviously we wanted to do it on our, on our own to make sure that we're meeting kids' needs, but we wanted to make sure from a state perspective that we weren't missing something that we needed to do.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Wendy. Go ahead, Jenny.
We also, going back, I know previously we had incentive programs before testing. So the kids took these tests seriously because they're long, they're hard, they're boring, but they're really important. And even though they're not marked on them, sometimes kids think they're, they're not important because they're just a test, you know, I can go through and do A, B, C, D or whatever. And I know in the past, we've had incentive programs where kids have gotten excited about taking their test and taking them seriously so that we know that when they're sitting down to take them, they, you know, had a good night's sleep, they've had breakfast, there's kind of a little competition going on, so people are really trying to do their best on them. Are we going back to those kinds of programs just to?
Yes.
Add to, like, they do know what they know, which is good, but also just sit down for hours and take tests, that they're doing it seriously?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we're, we're all motivated by, you know, receiving praise or knowing we'll get something if we really work hard on something that's hard for us or something we really don't want to do, right? We're motivated that way, too. So yes, absolutely, we will have.
If the board will remember, last spring, each of the buildings did teaching and learning presentations, and Suzanne actually did hers last year on the reward system that she had put in place at Maple Avenue. So I anticipate she'll be working with her team to bring some of those, maybe some others over to Bartlett this year. The other thing that I'll mention is practicing on the modulators on the state website is really critical because what we don't want to have happen is for kids to be frustrated with, well, where is the calculator on the screen, things like that. So we're going to make sure that we have plenty of practice that happens before the test because what I don't want to have happen is for a student to be so frustrated because they don't know how to navigate the system that, the dashboard that the state uses that perhaps they're not putting in their best effort. So using those modulators as a chance to practice, to get in so that students see that dashboard is going to be really critical, not just at the elementary level, but at the middle school level as well, and the high school in science.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Ryan.
Just before we move on to the Maple Lab piece, I just wanted to, again, thank Mrs. Pishka. I will remind the board that Suzanne wanted to go to Bartlett, wanted to go help improve things. We have work to do. We have work to do at Bartlett and the scores look very different between Bartlett and Maple Lab, as you'll hear momentarily. But again, I'd like to thank Mrs. Pishka again. The list of what are we doing, this is like the tip of an iceberg. If you know anything about Mrs. Pishka, she is thorough, she has high expectations, she's well thought out and planned. So I'm, I'm optimistic, I'm hopeful that we'll continue to see improvements at Bartlett. And I think that the work that Suzanne's doing with Mrs. Crete, I think we're on the right track.
Brian, if I can also add, the work that Suzanne and Darcy are doing with that tier one whole group instruction, they are in classrooms and they are coaching, which is what we want, is what are they seeing in the classroom? Because having that second or third set of Is in some cases in the classroom, being able to help teachers with, are you missing this? Or can you do this differently is so critical. So I just want to thank both of them for being really, you know, visible in classrooms and being able to really focus on tier one instruction because quite honestly, you can't do interventions and all those other things unless that tier one instruction is solid.
And coaching and supporting teachers is among the most important work that our administrators do. We want to continue, all teachers can continue to get better, to improve, and that's exactly the kind of support that our administrators are playing. Moving on? Maple Lab?
To Bill?
Mr. Demers? Mr. Demers, you did a great job on this, by the way. Oh, wait, you weren't there last year.
No, no, I can't. Mrs. Pishka did a great job. I can't take any credit, good or bad. So that's, that's all over to Mrs. Pishka. So similar format to Bartlett's, we're starting off with our math scores on the SAS. The state average is still the green and we are the yellow. So as you can see, in math, in grade three, we're just a little bit below the state average and in grade four, we're even with the state average. And I think, I know Mrs. Kohler already explained that kind of implementation dip with math, but I think, you know, outside of these kind of one-day snapshot things that get held up so high, I think some of the things I value is that teacher feedback on a program and the curriculum and how it's working. And when I met with teachers earlier in the year, they had very positive things to say about this new program. Aside from the fact that it is more rigorous, it's more challenging for the kids, when the kids came back to school this year after having it for just one year, they said they were better math learners compared to previous years. So I'm anticipating, and I think Suzanne is too, is that as we continue to work through this program, we're going to see those, those scores go right back up to where they were before the implementation, if not exceeding where we were at before. On to ELA for the SAS. Grade three, we were above the state average and same in grade four, so that is good news there. And then we are on to that historical data that you can see as well. And I think as we continue to move forward, I think what's going to be nice is we're those kids who were affected by COVID and all that disruption for a couple of years are moving on and we'll really be able to get to see some more, I don't want to say like consistent, but more typical progress as kids move through the school, through the grades, through the school year. And I think what's tricky is when you look back at this is contributing, how did COVID affect kids? How is it moving through? But I think what's going to be nice is we're moving past that and, and we'll be able to get a better handle on exactly how we're reaching our students and what we can do to improve as opposed to just playing catch-up from missing almost two years of school. And then we move on to our NIVA historical data. Again, like Suzanne mentioned earlier, we gave our fall assessment in September. We are giving our winter assessments in the first week of February, coming up shortly in grades two, three and four, math and ELA again. So it'll be exciting to see how the kids progress from September to February. And then in the spring, we're only going to do NIVA with second grade because grades three and four take the New Hampshire SAS test, and I feel like that just wouldn't be fair to make them also take NWA. So we, you know, we look forward to seeing how the kids do and like Suzanne talked about, we have, you know, luckily, my predecessor put in all these great incentive programs and all these good things in place that I can just steal and, and move forward with those, with the kids again. So, you know, if you, if you need anything, Suzanne, let me know. So in the short term, you know, a lot of the same stuff that Suzanne mentioned earlier and that Wendy talked about, we're going to keep going with our trainings for these new curricula that we have in place, keep looking at the data. And then obviously, when kids start struggling, utilizing our MTSS system and making sure that kids are getting the interventions that they need to be successful. We're always, you know, between administrators and service providers and other interventionists going into the classrooms, the teachers are getting a lot of support and feedback to be able to help the kids, and that's always valuable. We have all sorts of online tools for kids to be able to access, whether it's in the classroom or at home, which is nice. You know, and then we have all our long-term stuff, again, with the, the trainings that we talked about, the new induction program. A lot of the staff at Maple have gone through the letters training that the state has offered for free, which is, we've gotten really good feedback from the staff members about the quality of that training. It's really intensive and I think it takes two years for them to go through, but the state provided it free of charge for a few years. And I think that's actually coming to an end, I believe, this year. So we had a lot of teachers take advantage of that, which is really fantastic.
Bill, and if I could also add, with the letters training, I actually just wrote a grant for us to be able to have some after-school or before-school PD time for all of our teachers who went through letters training to get together to talk about what they learned, how they're using it in the classroom. So what's nice about that grant is, is that Bartlett and Maple teachers will be able to work together and talk about what they learned through that free, from that free training.
Nice. Great.
Then moving on to the tier two and three learners, again, you know, I think we're fortunate that we have a lot of talented and qualified interventionists and staff members to be able to work with kids and keep them going. As I mentioned earlier, those MTSS meetings, you know, if we have a kid who needs support, whether it's from a behavioral standpoint or academic, you know, that team gets together and puts their, you know, it might be people who have not worked with that student, so they get a fresh set of Is and they kind of get the rundown and are able to give some ideas to the classroom teacher to help with that. And then it's not a one and done thing that gets revisited over and over. And, you know, from just my short time at Maple already, you know, when I sit in on those meetings, there's a lot of kids that when we come back for the second or third meeting, they're doing better, right? And so the systems are working, the people are working hard and doing better to get the kids where they need to be. And, you know, long-term, we still have all those specialized literacy programs, which we mentioned, but other things too, like Wilson and OG, those things that are really essential for young learners who are struggling with reading, right? Because I think we all know that as important as math is, literacy is really that key because if you struggle with reading, you're going to struggle accessing all curriculum moving forward. So really having that focus on literacy at the young ages is super important. And then I think I'm now turning it over to you, right, Mrs. Kohler?
Yeah, so one of the things I had mentioned at the beginning of the presentation is looking at our local scores and then looking at the cost per pupil, and again, I'm glad Mr. Cludier mentioned this earlier, from the Department of Ed website on what districts are paying per pupil around us. So I chose a few districts surrounding us. One of them was, was on purpose. I chose Milford because demographically, it's close to us, but also has very similar demographics to Goffstown. So I wanted people to see that. I also chose Manchester because that is the closest to the cost per pupil that we are spending at the elementary level and is also, again, in close proximity. So you can see what I did was I took the proficiency level and for Goffstown, those are the scores combined for Maple and Bartlett. So obviously, they're not separated, it's combined score. And what our proficiency scores are and then the cost per pupil. And for people at home, there, I also have another slide up on the screen, just a visual that has a line graph that shows the elementary cost per pupil and below it, it shows the proficiency score. So it just gives a different look rather than the table so that people at home can see what their return on investment is. So again, if you look at us in comparison to Goff, to Manchester as an example, looking at our achievement scores in comparison to Manchester, who has a similar cost per pupil than we do. So I just, again, want people at home to see that because again, as we're going through this budget process and talking about return on investment, I think that's really important information for people at home to see.
Thank you, Wendy. Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we look at cost per pupil, and, and anybody can answer this, we're looking at the DOE, but that, you said that that's not the total cost for our district. So what's taking out, what's the delta there?
The two primary things that are removed from the state's calculation of the cost per pupil is the cost of transportation and any bonds. So for example, Bedford, does she have Bedford up here? Bedford's not up there.
No, I chose randomly.
So Bedford, when you look at the Bedford cost per pupil, that does not include the cost of their middle school, high school that that community is still paying for. So busing services and bonds are removed from the cost. Scott, is there anything else that's removed?
Those are the, those are the two big ones. And the transportation, because you have certain communities out west and in the north country.
Or rural.
Rural, right, that have massive transportation costs and rather than some ones where it's like a very small community and you have, you know, like the mileage for the routes are smaller. And then the bonding is, is obviously taken out as well. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Moving on?
Yeah, moving on.
So at this point, I'd like to invite the middle school and the high school up and thank you to the elementary folks.
Thank you, guys.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we've got Mr. Lewis, Mrs. Milligan and Mr. McDermott.
So before Mrs. Milligan and Mr. Lewis start their presentation for the middle school, I just want to remind the board and the public that at the middle school level, we did implement Math &amp; U, that new math program at the fifth grade, but at the sixth, seventh and eighth grade, they are continuing to use Big Ideas. Interestingly enough, the Math &amp; U program is written by the same people, that Big Ideas, and it's from the same publisher. So as we're looking at implementation, we're really hoping that it's going to be a lot easier and a seamless transition to go from Math &amp; U to Big Ideas because of using that same formula that they wrote with Big Ideas. So I just mentioned that before we get started.
And Wendy, just real quick.
Sure.
The high school is also using Big Ideas. And Wendy, just real quick, the high school is also using Big Ideas. So when students are in-
For algebra and geometry.
Algebra one, geometry, algebra two, that's the same program that we're using between the middle school and the high school.
And we did get an updated version of Big Ideas as well, so they-
It's the same stuff.
Yeah, but some updated information.
Yeah.
So, good evening. As the curricular coordinator, I'm going to have Mr. Lewis take the lead on this, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to help answer them as well.
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you for having me. So what we can see here is our ELA performance by grade and against the state average. You'll see that we are in all grades, we are above the state average for ELA. And if you look at the long-term performance over several years, again, you'll notice that same trend continues to be consistent across the board. For math, you'll notice that, and I want to, this is one big point of highlight to show, is that our eighth grade math scores are down below state average this year, or last year, I should say. That is something where, and if you see this on the next slide as well, you'll see kind of the history of things, but we did have, what you can't see on this particular graph is that we did have some new teaching staff. Also, we had a math teacher that was out for the vast majority of last year. She was one of our algebra teachers. So we did have to kind of piecemeal the coverage of those classes and move kids around. We had some kids that were in seventh grade and eighth grade algebra together, same algebra level class, but two different grades and whatnot as well, so different teachers switching up through the year. So we believe that also had an impact on the students' performance on that particular test.
Mr. Lewis, if I'm not mistaken, two of those teachers were new to the district, and then one you had mentioned was out.
Correct.
So you had to piecemeal.
Yeah.
Two different certified math teachers from a different grade level ended up sharing that, those classes to try to have a certified teacher in the room. So there was a lot of disruption in that eighth grade.
Next, we have our science SAS scores. You will notice that we are average or equal to the state average for science for eighth grade. On the next slide, you will see that if you look at last year's, our scores were actually in eighth grade below the state average. We put a lot of work into vertical alignment with the high school. We did a lot of scope and sequence look with staff to try to figure out where our holes were, what we were maybe spending too much time on, how we could kind of rearrange things to be able to adjust appropriately. And a lot of PD was put in and continues to be put in outside of school hours as well by staff to try to remedy this, and we're seeing the bounce back, which is a very positive thing as well.
So if I can just mention, both Kurt and Josh have made it a priority, especially for our math and science teachers, to get together, and this has been happening since last year, to get together and talk about vertical alignment and what they're seeing in the classroom. For example, with mathematics, one of the things that they looked at was SAT. What are some of the vocabulary words that we're seeing on the SAT so that the middle school teachers understand what those things are as they're building up towards those high school tests? So a lot of professional development, and a big thank you to Josh and Kurt for making sure they're organizing that time for those teachers to get together, not just in their building to talk about vertical alignment, but between buildings as well.
So Wendy, when you say vertical alignment, you mean teachers from different grade levels are working together?
Correct.
So middle school teachers working with high school teachers?
Yes.
I was going to mention as well, you had talked earlier in the presentations about the practice, and what we found, and I went in and took one of the science tests, is that really, there's a lot to navigate, and if kids don't practice using the actual system and navigating what buttons to click and what experiments to pull down and what, it's kind of all over the place. So we're putting a lot of time into kids practicing this year, so they're not hung up on actually how to navigate the system, but more-
So they can show what they know.
Yeah, so they can focus on the content.
And the dashboard for SAS looks significantly different than the dashboard for NWEA. Significantly different.
Much more complicated.
Up next, we have our NWA data. Here you can see the historical data for our NWA, and our scores are very solid across the board for ELA and for math in all grades. And historically, they're maintaining a pretty consistent score across the board for the most part. This next slide shows our advanced math enrollment. This kind of plays in a little bit to that conversation we were having before about our math scores as well from last year. You'll notice that from the 23-24 year, we had a huge bubble of kids, that large bubble of students that went through is likened also to our students from New Boston coming in. I think we had 90 extra students that came to us from New Boston that year. Our eighth grade, or our numbers this year, are remaining pretty consistent to what they were prior to that. But nevertheless, I think it's important to note that the breakdown shows you our accelerated math kids, which is our seventh grade math, in between algebra and grade-level math. Then we have algebra in eighth grade, and of course, we have geometry available to our eighth grade students as well.
And again, for the middle school, I got the same information from those same districts that are surrounding us, looking at proficiency levels and the cost per pupil for the middle school. You're going to notice that Henniker, just because they don't have a middle school, I did not obviously put the cost per pupil in there, but you can see, looking at some of those surrounding towns versus the middle school, we are the lowest cost per pupil in this area. And again, I made another graphic that's behind you, I know it's not in your packet, but looking at that line graph of the cost per pupil versus the bar graph showing the proficiency levels of some of the surrounding towns. And again, if you look at us versus a Milford who has similar demographics in the amount of money that they're spending on that cost per pupil versus us and our scores, same thing looking at Manchester, a similar cost per pupil in our scores in comparison, again, thinking about that, that return on investment and how important that is.
And lastly, these are the different steps that we're taking to help support our students, both those that are below proficiency and those that are at proficiency or exceeding. We are looking at things like using multiple data points between SAS, between NWA testing, we use iXL as well for our students to provide us with data points, to be able to provide students with specific needs that they might have, whether that be through our MTSSA or BE processes. We provide after-school homework, then Title I support for our fifth grade math students. We have reading specialists and interventionists, and of course, we have a literacy class in seventh and eighth grade. We provide teacher support in small groups, ELA math and science instruction, differentiate in those small groups. As I already mentioned, iXL, tutor.com is available to all students in New Hampshire. We also do PBIS initiatives around testing to try to really encourage those students to try their best and understand that even though they might not receive like a specific grade for this test, it is something that shows what they know and allows us to help kind of drive our instruction and moving forward. Professional development is provided for all general education and special education staff in math, reading, and science. We have a district-wide elementary math programming committee, which is our Math &amp; U program, and then the new teacher mentoring program, vertical alignment between buildings and curriculum meetings, monthly curriculum meetings and monthly professional learning community meetings with core subject areas in the building. Looking at what we do for kids that are a little bit advanced, again, one of the other points that I want to make sure I throw out there is we continue to differentiate, that's a huge piece of it, providing them with work that meets them at their level.
Great. Any questions? All right, great. Moving on to Mr. McDermott.
Mr. McDermott?
So I just want to start by saying that I am continually in awe of the work that our teachers do, and I'm honored to work alongside them. I get to look at the data and I get to see that, so just wanted to put that out there. Case in point, the US News and World report ranked us 19th out of 93 schools in New Hampshire. They have their own ranking system. Part of that was they ranked us number nine in curriculum, college curriculum breadth. And what that means is the proportion of 12th graders who took and passed an AP exam in multiple areas. So our kids are taking multiple tests, and you'll see that with the next slide. So you can see last year, we had 193 students who took 341 AP tests. This year so far, and I'm sure we'll have a couple changes to the numbers, but we've got 230 participants signed up for 427 tests.
Wow.
So the numbers keep going up. And the last big thing on this slide is 85% of our test takers passed the test. So this, it's a one-through-five scale, you have to get a three to pass, 85% of our test takers did. Because of that, we've earned an honorable status with the College Board. The things I want to draw your attention to on this slide in particular, I mentioned the scale, six classes had average scores over four, so again, three is passing, their scores were over four on average. Seven classes had 100% pass rates, every single student in those classes passed. And we had 17 tests with averages higher than the state's.
Mr. McDermott, can you talk about what happens when students, so say Brady McCann passes an AP test?
It's a stretch. It's a real stretch.
I've passed all the ones I've taken.
Maybe Brady was a bad example. Do stu-, what happens? So you pass that, now I graduate from Goffstown High School, what does that mean for me when I go to college?
Depending upon the college, if you get a passing score or above, you'll get college credit. So you might have to, you might get out of that first introductory English class, for example, and that translates to real dollars.
Yeah.
And a lot of them, increasingly so. This is our evidence-based reading and writing benchmark scores for the SAT, which is our test for math and English. And we've, last year, we had an eight percentage point lead over the state. This is, and I know the slide is kind of wonky, but this gives you a quick visual of where we are in the state with our scores. We're 23rd out of 95 schools. And this slide takes that top third of the scale and shows us kind of our nearest comparably scoring schools. These are our math benchmark scores. Last year, we had a six percentage point lead on the state, it's our highest in four years. Obviously, the data for 2020 is nonexistent. That gives you a general sense of where we're at there. And the next slide shows you the visual for the state, 27th out of 95 schools. And then the following slide showed you again that top third of the scale and some of the comparably scoring schools around us.
So Mr. McDermott, on the SAT for reading, writing, math, as well as the science benchmark, Goffstown High School students outperformed the state average on every single test at all levels tested.
Correct. Consistently. So when I say heavy lifting, I mean it. For the science test, the benchmark scores, we have a 12 percentage point lead over the This gives you the visual of where we are with the participating schools, and again, that top third of the scale broken down on the next slide gives you a sense of comparably scoring schools around us.
I've asked Mrs. Kohler to think next year if there's a way to superimpose the cost per pupil into that as well.
Yeah.
So I want to show that we're 20th out of 95 schools, but when you line up those 95 schools and look at how much money they're spending, which number are we? We're not 20th, we're probably like fifth? Mr. Gross, fourth, fifth?
I'd say better than that, but I'd have to take a look at that. But we're the lowest cost per pupil in the state.
For any K to 12 system.
K through 12, yeah.
Yep.
This gives you a sense of our trajectory for our graduates. 96% go on to college of some sort. We had five individuals go to military service last year, which represents about 2%.
And again, I broke down those test scores versus the cost per pupil of, at the high school level of surrounding districts. You'll notice with South Eagan, that is a co-op, so that is not just Amherst students in there. The same thing with John Stark, that's not just Ware students, that's Henniker students, Stoddard, I believe, that those are cooperative schools, so I just want to bring that to your attention. But again, looking at our proficiency scales versus our cost per pupil, and I again have the line in the bar graphs that show those surrounding districts and where our test scores fall in comparison to not only them, but also the state average as well. One other thing that I would like to mention is, we've been talking a little bit about professional development. I know that Josh mentioned our new teacher induction program. Those programs really are essential to what we're doing. Before the 23-24 school year here in Goffstown, we had 23 new staff members come in. 12 of those were new to either special ed, intervention, in elementary classroom, or were teaching in a mathematics classroom. So that's a lot of change that we had. Starting this year, we had 28 new staff members here in Goffstown, and again, 12 of those were either in the elementary setting, a mathematics classroom, special education, or intervention. So all of those professional development opportunities to make sure that we're getting those new staff members up to speed on, you know, what are those important teaching factors that are here in Goffstown and getting to know our curriculum resources are really critical. So I just bring that again up as, you know, we want to keep our teachers here. I think that training piece, there's a lot to it, and getting teachers who know our curriculum resources and keeping them here is really critical to our achievement.
Great. And that's it for us. Anybody have any questions, comments before we finish? Go ahead, Reta.
Yeah, just a comment, and I think we talked a little bit about this in the curriculum committee. I mean, when kids get to high school, they get to shine in many different ways, and in big ways, but it's really the entire school system. I mean, they're starting at elementary, and it's really great, the way that the schools are working together.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Well done. Great presentation.
Appreciate all this information.
And please go home, guys.
Enjoy your night.
Thanks.
All right, so moving on, we need to approve December 16th meeting minutes. Did everybody have a chance to read them? Anybody see anything? If not, we'll need a motion.
Move to approve the minutes of December 16th, 2024.
Thank you, Jenny. I have a motion by Jenny. Do I have a second?
One second.
By Reta. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teacher, student, aye. Yes, oppose, abstaining, one abstention, and we're at motion passed today.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to committee reports. Dan, you want to do finance the manifest?
I'd like to offer a motion that we approve the manifest summary presented this evening in the amount of $2,211,919.77.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline. Okay, go ahead, Dan.
I'd like to ask Mr. Scott if he wouldn't mind reading this for me, please.
Yeah.
Mr. Gross?
Sure. All right, you'll note that of that manifest, a little over $1.6 million relates to salary, the taxes and the benefits associated with that. Special education activity was over $149,000, of which all of these relate to either special ed contracted services or out-of-district tuition, or those services that are provided to those in out-of-district placements. There was also a little over an $89,000 payment made to Durham School Services, and that was for in-district and out-of-district transportation for our special education students. We did not have a very large number of general expenses. Of the ones that are more noteworthy, we do pay a quarterly payment, this one was a little over $18,000 to Budget Document Technologies, and that is for the copier services and managed print all throughout the district. We paid a little over, we paid almost $17,000 to Dead River Company for propane, almost $130,000 to Goffstown Truck Center for regular ed transportation, and again, that is a, there are 10 installments that we pay throughout the year for that. SAU 19, there was $191,000 plus payment for the assessment for that month. We paid the US Post Office $5,000 for postage here at Goffstown High School, as well as a payment of over $10,000 for WB Mason for paper and school supplies. And lastly, Performance Food Services was a little over $7,000, and that was for food and other commodities for the food service program.
Anybody have any questions, comments? CNN, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teacher, student, aye. Opposed, abstentions. All right, we're unanimous. Did you get all that, Chris?
I did want to let Brady know that there was a $30 check that was rejected for a Nittany Lions Penn State banner, and supposedly that was conflicting with you, so it was rejected. So I assume you're a Notre Dame fan?
Very much so.
for a Nittany Lions Penn State banner. And supposedly, that was conflicting with you, so it was rejected. So I assume you're a Notre Dame fan?
Very much so.
The, I want to skip, if I could, and go a little bit out of order because Jess is here.
Yeah.
So in our ANF meeting, and it's not on your, on your agenda, but Steven Borget, who's our IT director, you'll recall that we had a very, very large amount of old laptops and other IT equipment that was old and outdated. And Steve was, was able to reach out to a recycler. And all of those old laptops were recycled and repurposed. And with that, we received a check of almost $31,000 for that IT equipment. I'm not sure if you remember during the original budget presentation, that Principal Milligan at Mountain View had requested two laptop carts. And in order to try to keep our budget as low as possible, those two laptop carts were removed from the budget that the superintendent and I worked on. It was our hope that we would be able to do something, basically. So anyway, with this almost $31,000 check that we have from this recycling company, if the board was so inclined, we could accept and expend that money per RSA-198, which allows you to expend unanticipated revenues, which is what this is. If the board is so inclined, at your next meeting, there could be a public hearing, which would allow you, after that hearing and obtaining any type of public input, to then expend funds for the purposes of purchasing up to fifty laptops. I will tell you that it will cost us a little bit more money to outfit two laptop carts. It's probably going to be in the neighborhood of $40,000, of which we have to use some existing IT lines throughout the district to buy the carts themselves, and if there's any shortfall in the laptops. But this would pay for a lion's share of getting Mountain View two more laptop carts. I will share with you that Mountain View has the lowest amount of IT technology per student of any of our schools. And it also happens to be the, lack of a better term, the hand-me-down capital of the Goffstown School District in terms of.
I believe the elementary schools are the official hand-me-down?
I'm not even so sure that's the case. I think that would be called a hand-me-up. But it's, it is not, it is the least IT resource building.
It's the least IT resource building, and every single student at Mountain View Middle School is tested every year. That's the only school that has state testing at every single grade level, every one of them.
Brian, if I could also mention, when we're in the middle of testing, it takes all of those carts offline for all of the other teachers who are not in testing but want to use computers as a curriculum asset for our SAVIS science program, for our math program, for IXL use, all of those things. It takes them offline because they have to use them for testing.
And we have to do the testing electronically, right?
We do.
Now, does the state give us any resources to do the state mandated testing? Or is it the local district's responsibility to have the technology infrastructure to meet their mandate?
They do not give us the resources.
It's part of the two grand we get.
Four.
Forty-one hundred, but it's okay.
Go ahead, Scott.
So with the board's assent on this one, are you okay with me working with Denise and posting a public hearing at your next meeting to be able to accept and expend those proceeds for the purposes that I've spoken about?
Go ahead, Jared.
So with this purchase that we're looking to do, is this part of a replenishment cycle? Or is this a net new, one of two more carts that weren't already in our budget?
It is a little bit of both, but I would say net new more than replenishment because there is a need for, to give you an example, I believe that we have sixteen or seventeen laptop carts here at the high school with thousand fifty students. And I think we only have eight or nine at Mountain View. It could be, maybe you know more than I do. Is that about right? So there is a need for net new, and there's also a need for replacement due to age because a lot of these laptops are, they're eight, ten, twelve years old. I mean, they're kind of being band-aided, so I don't want to give you a disingenuous answer, but I will tell you this, that there is a need for net new.
Let me ask a question this way. If we didn't receive this money, would we still try to purchase those laptop carts?
Say that again?
If we didn't receive this money, would we still try to purchase those laptop carts as part of our operating budget?
I know that Jessica and Mountain View desperately want to do that, yes.
I think that this, if I can share something, though, Jared, this is a good example of how the budget process works here. So very reasonable request from Mrs. Milligan. She needs two new laptop carts. We don't have enough. We need to test every kid in the building. I cut them. And I cut them because we wanted to come in with a budget that was as palatable as it could possibly be. Pretty routinely, we get requests of over a million dollars of new spending for every budget. So this is an example. There was no doubt in my mind that they needed the laptop carts. When Mrs. Kohler was the principal, she was, she raised the same issues, the same concerns. And it was our hope that we might be able to do something creative this year to help support that. But we make hard cuts, and right, wrong, or indifferent, those cuts were made before it got to the school board. So we routinely make hard decisions and make cuts across all the schools.
Anyone else? What's the consensus?
I'm fine with the public hearing coming up at another meeting. I think it's an appropriate way to use the money of a way that Steven, you know, used our old equipment. So turning it back over, I think that's a great idea.
I'd agree with that, and thanks to him for thinking creatively. So we have a lot of, lot of budget needs, and this is, this was really innovative. Well, not innovative, this is just great thinking. So thank you for always looking out for every dollar.
Anyone else?
So we would still be a little bit short with that money?
Yeah, I think we're going to have to, you know, look within.
What do you think about ten grand, Scott?
Uh, yeah, eight to ten.
And you said that there are lines in the IT budget that we can move?
We'll look at those.
We're going to, we'll look at that.
We'll be ready to talk about where that could come from.
I'd be on board.
Yep.
So are they taking the hearing before the next school board meeting?
Yes.
We've got to post it?
Yeah, I need seven days. I've already given a draft of that posting to Mrs. Moran so that hopefully tomorrow, we would be able to put that in the paper, you know, to meet the deadline.
So is everybody good with this, Jared?
Well, no, I think having the public meetings is the right thing to hear from the public, whether they want to receive that money and offset taxes or to use it for something that's needed for the, for the middle school. I think we should be doing that.
Yeah. It's the most transparent way of doing it, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and thank you for sticking around, guys.
So you guys go home, please.
Yes, go home.
So next on your agenda are budget transfers. And I apologize for the long, it's the e-finance method in terms of how it's done. But what these center around mostly are three core areas. It is special ed contracted services. So if we can't, in this particular case, we did, we needed Mountain View speech, and we're hiring a contracted service, so it's a reallocation of salary dollars to hire a contracted service. You'll also see that when we brought on those physicians at Bartlett and at Glen Lake, where those funds came from. And as you know, that came from the teaching, teacher line at Bartlett, and one was a district-level teaching position, so you have that. And then the other ones are related to a redistribution of the salary pool. These are, the salary pool is used for salary increases for administrators in particular. So what I did was I tried to, in instances in which we saw that there were shortfalls, I redistributed to try to make it so that it's kind of a net zero. And then lastly, we had movement of both administrators and teachers. And in some cases, movement in between buildings. An example would be, we have an administrator from Maple Avenue who was paid at a higher rate than the prior principal's rate, so you had a little bit of that. We also moved some teaching positions. One was a Bartlett teacher went to Maple. We had a regular ed teacher at Mountain View. That was, the money was repurposed for a special ed teacher, so things like that. So this is, when I look at the budget overall, when you get your budget reports, a lot of times you'll see like these big negatives. This was just a, and then you see some big positives. It's just trying to smooth that out and making sure that we have, we don't have so many negative balances, negative balances in some of these individual lines. As Dan always says, the budget is a bottom-line budget. And the budget is often looked at at a function level. But this just helps me, Doug, and others in the business office kind of manage your budget to see where, where the money is. And it also demonstrates the transparency that if we do move positions, this is where it was coming from. So in all, any budget transfer over these amounts requires board approval for your policy, so that's why you have them, so.
Anybody have any questions or comments? There's a motion on the page, something else to read it?
I'll do the motion. I move to approve the budget transfers listed as GBT-193 through GBT-196 as presented.
Thank you, Caroline, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is that Jack?
Yep.
Thanks, Jack. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, student, yes. Nay, and abstaining. All right, we're unanimous. Did you get all that, Dennis?
So I'd like, Karen, to go a little bit out of order, then what's on this agenda. And Jared, I might need your a little bit of help, because some of these have to do with the budget committee, and Jack as well, in terms of budget committee action. So Jack, if you don't mind holding up that one. So this is a sheet that I gave you, which is, which represents the actions that were taken by the budget committee. And for the most part, the budget committee did go line by line, page by page. And, you know, based, if you saw some of those discussions, I think that those discussions were an indication to me that this board and the administration did a lot of those difficult decisions upfront. They ultimately, there were some reductions made by the budget committee. One of them was that Goffstown High School physics trip. I thought Jared and Jack did a great job. I mean, this is part of the curriculum. This is really not like a, it's a teaching and learning experience, but that was, that was reduced, and that was about $8,700, from what I believe. And then there were also reductions made to stipends. And I want to preface this by saying that the budget committee did this all across the board, fair enough. Both the town, not only the town, but also the sewer commission, the water precinct, right? Like, all of them. There were a few ones that were exempted, but it went so far as to cut the stipends for the water commissioners and the supervisors of the checklist, and, you know, the moderators, et cetera. So what I will share with you is that, you know, ultimately, it is a bottom-line budget for the tools, the school, the town, the water precincts, et cetera. I believe that Jared and Jack and others who made public comments to the budget committee felt that a lot of these stipends were a very reasonable request for people that were doing a lot of work, ranging from your positions to treasurers, to water precinct commissioners, to supervisors of the checklist. And so ultimately, there will be a public hearing next Tuesday. There's also a meeting tomorrow night here, right here.
Can we just get rid of the whole budget part? You got it, you can do it all here. The budget committee report out, you're doing great.
Oh.
So what's the meeting tomorrow? Because didn't, didn't the budget committee move both the town budget and the school budget to the public hearing on the fourteenth? So what's the point of the meeting tomorrow?
There may be a collective bargaining agreement that the select board has, so that might be coming up tomorrow, but I'm not sure, I haven't seen the agenda.
Yeah, and that's, that was, you know, more or less the placeholder, you know, for that. But there will be a public hearing, and we probably, I know it's advertised on the Glen Lake sign, what we probably have to do here at the high school is put it on our Facebook page is to let folks know that there will be a budget hearing next Tuesday here at the high school.
So Scott, that budget public hearing, that's the opportunity for the budget committee to hear from the public?
Right.
So I'll just share in general, of all the meetings that I attended at the budget committee, and I watched, with the exception of Jack, I don't think I heard any public comment in support of the school district budget. I'm not sure if that happened and I missed it, but, I mean, wow. We, I hope that people would let the budget committee know that our budget's up less than three percent, that's lower than the cost of inflation. We're the lowest K to twelve system in the entire state. As we just saw from Mrs. Kohler's presentation, for the most part, our test scores, certainly at the high school, are above the state average and everything. I think it's going to be important for people to let the budget committee know where they stand on the budget.
Okay, and with that.
Did you have your hand up? Jenny?
Yeah, I, I think you all know that I read Facebook to see what's going on in the community, see where people are and all. I think this year, we're going to have to do a lot of teaching in, like your presentation, about what actual budgets are and what people have to pay money for, and what taxes do in our town. Because there are so many people that are making comments on Facebook and honestly have no clue of the importance of budgets or what even is going on in a budget in, in Goffstown. There was a person who was all upset because they went to register their big fancy new pickup truck. And, oh my God, the town of Goffstown was charging them all these taxes where their old bill was this, and now their new bill is all this money. They have absolutely no clue that when you buy a brand-new truck, it's going to cost you a lot of money to register it. And it's not the town of Goffstown charging you a whole lot of money. It's like your responsibility as an owner and a consumer to know when you buy something really expensive, then how does that affect you other than you're really happy about it? And another person was talking about their taxes were going up because of that new library. And I'm on there like, the new library? We don't have a library. And the man says, oh, excuse me, I must have, I must have been told the wrong information. And so people are out there with all kinds of craziness that they have no clue what the budgets are, no clue what their responsibilities as taxpayers are to pay. And like, if you live in a town, you have a responsibility to pay for the things that your town needs. Or you're going to live in an armpit community. And right now, everybody is looking to take every single dollar off of everybody's budget. But they honestly, I think for the most part, don't understand what that means to the town, to the school. You know, when they have to pay $10 million for a fire truck because there's no account in CIP to pay for that over the years. And, you know, all of a sudden, they're going to have to pay all this money for a fire truck. People don't understand what that, those kinds of things that are going on. So I think, you know, in, in presenting our budget, we have to do a lot of teaching about what the responsibility of taxpayers are. You can't just live here and not be responsible. And then the other thing, I'm sorry for going on and on, but this makes me crazy sometimes. The other thing is, is there's a lot of information out right now about state funding is really poor. And there's been a lot of trouble with their budget, a lot of revenues are lost. And so if we think our budgets are bad now, and all of the things that they've taken out of both the school and the town budgets, the state out of both the school and the town budgets, the state budget continues to lose money on things that they're doing with their revenues. And they're going to continue to bring it down on the town and the school. And our budgets are going to continue to go up with mandates that, that are not funded by the, by the state. And people don't understand that. They keep thinking that that's just an excuse that we're using because we want to spend all this money. But they really have to understand it's not an excuse. It's a real problem the state of New Hampshire has right now.
Amen.
Thank you, Jenny.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Did you want to finish?
Go on, I'll add on to that.
Go ahead, Jack.
When we talk about that, my clearest example that I point out at the breakfast counter, where I do most of my pontificating, is that the state increased the eligibility for the special needs students, the highest special needs students in the state of one year from 21 years old to 22 years old. How much did they increase the funding? Zero. Now, that's a, that's a, an amount of students that were already in the system, where they could have nailed down an exact number, almost to the dollar, and funded it appropriately. Yet, they chose to extend the eligibility and decrease the funding.
And as a result, we got $250,000 less than, in special education aid that we were expecting this year.
Well, we didn't get it less. The community had to pay a whole lot more.
More, right.
And I think sometimes we lose track of that. It's like, yes, the school district quote unquote lost $250,000 of revenue, but I like to say that all of us who pay taxes in Goffstown and in New Boston had to pay to make up that shortfall. And I think that's the key difference, you know, in my opinion. But I, if I could just, just add something to what you said, is that I think that, I know, I shouldn't say think, I know with 100% confidence that the school administrators and this school board recognize that Goffstown has a very low commercial industrial tax base, which places a burden on a residential taxpayer to fund school and town services. I think it's reflected in the fact that we're the lowest cost per pupil in the state of New Hampshire, that our budgets reflect that, that how we manage school finances reflects all of those things. So, that I think we hear loud and clear from the people who went to those Budget Committee meetings and stated that they're fearful of being taxed out of their homes, because that is a genuine concern for people who are on fixed incomes or for people who cannot deal with these rate increases. But the fact remains is that I think that the budget that we presented and the hard choices that we make year in and year out, especially this year, I mean, I was not too pleased when the superintendent said, oh, you got to get this budget. I don't know. I mean, it, it was kind of, sorry, it was a little crazy, you know, I thought, but we did it. And I think that was a reflection upon the fact that people have seen high tax increases in the last three years. Now, we can argue about state taxes left and right, and there's a lot of merit behind that, but I think folks right now, what, what I've seen last year, and I'll say it again this year, is that our current system is pitting neighbor against neighbor, friends who, people who like each other, who are struggling to pay for these things because of a broken system. And I don't see that system unless there's some major changes. Like, it's not going to get any better. So, we're going to have to continue to be very judicious and prudent in terms of our budgets, how we spend our money, the transparency, you know, that we provide to our community to let them know that they're getting that good return that Wendy had mentioned on that investment. We're not going to be perfect, and we know that we're going to make continuous improvements. But we're, I think we're being very good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and I think that's the key. Because we're not, this group, this board is not going to solve the state funding revenue woes. But, you know, hopefully with enough pressure and discussion across the state, maybe that helps. And I will tell you that these conversations are happening in every single town in New Hampshire right now. I, I talked to my peers. Every, everybody's having the same issues. It's not a Goffstown problem. It's on the, it's everywhere.
But I think we have to continue to bring it up.
Yeah. I, I, I hear you, you know.
So, moving on, are we done with?
Yeah, we're done with that. And, and tagging along with the actions of the Budget Committee, and that's the warrant review, is when Jared, when you presented the capital reserve fund, you know, Jared mentioned that we are looking to do that Phase Two of the Mountain View Middle School cistern repair project. And that was, that was going to be 300,000 of the $400,000 that the school district proposed. There was general consensus, and correct me if I'm wrong, that 300,000 would be a number that the, that the Budget Committee would seemingly endorse better than a 400,000? So, am I off base with that? Jared?
Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, so, budget, Jack, Jack was at all of them too. They decimated CIP for the town. Like, they kept their operating budget, but decimated their CIP. And they're looking for us to kind of follow along, if you will, to say, hey, I see that there's these three things on CIP. Can you skip putting money towards the field? We understand that, you know, the fire pan, or the--
Cistern.
Well, no, the other one that we had was needed. But could you use some other money for the cistern? They, they understand that it's needed. So, they did ask us to kind of drop it down from 400 to 300,000. Scott and I did talk about this, and I think to be on board with what they did to the town, this just shows us that we are hearing the Budget Committee, and hopefully we will get more members to vote to approve a $300,000 CRF fund. They did discuss, you know, having an additional or a new field CRF that would be used. You know, that was one of their kind of ponderate. I, I don't think it's appropriate. You know, we could always say, well, we could have multiple CRF funds for multiple schools or one for each school. I think the, the process that we put in place is the one to do. But I think to follow along with what was done to the town, I think we should be looking to reduce our CRF from 400 to 300. And that's what Scott's kind of put on the draft warrant article here.
So, I think we're going to discuss this under--
Later, new business.
Under new business, but I wanted to kind of tee that up. The other, as we're, again, segue into the warrant, at our last school board meeting, there was a discussion about changing the language of the capital reserve fund article, and I included, hopefully it's in the packet, with respect to the question that I proposed to the school district's legal counsel. And as I mentioned in A and F, you know, to kind of summarize, I, it is my opinion that our legal counsel doesn't even like the language of no new taxation as, as a result of this article. However, he, he felt that even that language was unnecessary because the term surplus is already in, in your warrant article. That said, he would not recommend, you know, adding more language, and reluctantly, he agreed to no new taxation, et cetera, which has already been approved language by the Department of Revenue. So, his recommendation was to just simply keep the language, which was very similar or almost identical to that of what the Budget Committee requested of both the school district and the town. So, that's what, where, where that landed. And then, lastly, there was two other things. One is the default budget. So, the default budget is one that is set by the school board, and it's included in your packet. You'll note that in your packet, that default budget is a number that includes the general fund default budget number, as well as the food service budget and the special article, special revenue budget. And the purpose of that default budget is should the budget that is proposed fail at, you know, in March, this is the budget that the school district has to use. And unfortunately, we're on one this year. So, it is a requirement of the school board to vote on the default budget, accepting it or approving it, and then from there, you have to sign that document. And Denise, did I bring that, or do you have that? What? Okay, I probably have it in here.
So, we're going to do that now, Scott?
Yeah. If you don't mind.
So, I will do a motion to accept the default budget in the amount of $56,897,002 and to authorize the board to sign it.
All right, so I have a motion by Caroline. Do I have a second? A second by Lauren. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, student, yes, opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous. If teachers and students say yes.
All right. So, what I'll do is, at some point at this meeting, I will print that off, and then you can sign it. There was two other things that, or three other things that were discussed in A and F, which I, I believe mentions, it warrants a mention. First and foremost, I mentioned at the admin finance meeting that I will be doing a mini operational review for our IT department. I had a conversation with both Brian and Wendy and Stephen Borget about our IT staffing. We've had an increasing number of needs in terms of all of, all of our security systems or IT related. Everything seems to be IT related, and the number of tickets that we are getting in order to resolve IT type issues, our deployments in terms of technology, maintaining our systems, just the, we're having issues around IT. And so, I'm going to be working with Stephen, developing questions for his IT staff, and spending probably the next 30 to 60 days determining, you know, where, what our strengths are, what are some apparent weaknesses, and, and how staffing or differences in staffing that operation will lead to better outcomes for us. So, and I think we've stated this over the last two years, that our IT needs are pretty great, but yet, we have not kept up with that. And those were other things that we did not include, you know, in, in this budget, but we need to be prepared to be very nimble and flexible on future IT needs, and this, this is kind of needed, to have not just an IT perspective, but somebody who's a little bit outside of the IT world. So, I don't know, Brian, if you wanted to--
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, we will, we know that we have significant needs in the IT area. It will take us multiple fiscal years to get to the point that we have the staffing levels that we need, that we need. So, this, we're not going to do this in one budget year. This is going to take us a couple of budget years. And the board should anticipate that we're going to come forward with some recommendations down the road. But it's, we, we met on this last week. We know exactly how we're going to kind of go through this analysis, but we have needs in the IT department that we can no longer ignore.
And then, there was just, there was two others. One, I, there was a, there's sometimes this crossover in between subcommittee. So, I did provide Shane, who's, who's the chair of our policy committee, a new policy that is for advertising in schools. So, this is a potential revenue generator, and that's something that we have heard from folks in the Budget Committee, people in, in our community. Are there any ways to generate revenue? And advertising is one of those. So, I did, I did provide Shane with a proposed policy. That policy was largely taken from Manchester, Nashua, and other school districts in, over the, in the country. If this is something that does meet its muster and goes through the policy committee, I know Dan and others on A and F asked a question, well, what would these rates be? And how would, that would, if the board accepts the policy, then the next step would be then the regulation, which would be, what would those rates be? I wanted to be very clear to A and F that the first couple of years of this policy, if it were adopted, will have some administrative cost to it in terms of legal review, developing agreements, administrators. As, as you go out and you sell these advertising, there's going to be some upfront cost, and then that diminishes over, you know, over time. So, if the board does embark on this, that's great. Just recognize that there will be higher admin costs or, you know, legal costs in the first year or two, and then it will diminish. So, just be mindful of that. And then, lastly, there was a request, and I didn't want you hearing this on Facebook or other things, but with a new turf field, people want to use it. And part of that is people want to use it as early as possible in the winter. And the Goffstown High School Lacrosse Booster Club did request to provide funding to plow the turf field. There are risks with that, and risks obviously mean that we would not be doing any of that plowing ourselves with our own staff. It requires specialized training. Folks who do it, they typically have gone through extensive training. Obviously, there would need to be significant liability, insurance involved, but recognizing there's a risk reward. Even companies that are trained and have insurance and are bonded, et cetera, if they, as a boo-boo, you take your field offline. So, there will be conversations between the athletic director, the facilities director, and obviously the principal here, myself, and others to weigh that risk reward. But, you know, recognizing that even though things are possible, we have to decide whether or not it's a risk worth taking. So, I just, I leave that, you know, with you, that you may be hearing more about it. So, and that is it.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, that was a big one.
Hello, Heather.
Yeah, Dan.
Where are we on the wording of Article Three? I know we mentioned it, or Scott mentioned it, and the attorney gave us his proposed language. Are we going to be talking about that later?
We are going to talk about it--
Weren't we?
--in the new business, so--
In the new business is the CRF.
Yeah, well--
Moving to recommend, so I think at that time--
We can address it there, but we're not going to be making a motion to go to deliberate session. We even haven't, haven't even had the public hearing from the Budget Committee yet, so--
Right.
This would be premature.
Yeah.
But we can talk about it then, if you'd like.
Yeah, we can talk about it then. It's up to you guys. I mean, we're already in budget. If you guys want to talk about it now, or you want to talk about it later, about the new wording from recommendations--
Yeah, I like the recommendation that the attorney gave us, which strikes the additional sentence that was added, and doesn't add a new sentence to try to explain the other side of the added sentence.
Well, if everybody can read it. What is anybody's thoughts on this? Can you read the language? It's tiny.
Yeah, it's tiny.
Yeah, well--
Can anyone read it?
Is it bigger on there?
I, I do confess, I blew it up to about a 200% on the computer.
I converted my email into a PDF, so it--
Okay, there it is.
It's under the draft warrant article.
Yeah, shall the Goffstown School District vote to raise an appropriate--
You got the 300,000 there, that's why.
Up to 400, we'd have to change it to 300,000 for deposit into the existing facilities capital reserve fund established in 2019, with this sum to come from the June 30th, 2025 unassigned fund balance, parenthetical surplus available for transfer on July 1st, 2025. And that's pretty darn similar to what we had last year and all the years--
He asked that I put a question mark with some--
Oh, yeah. Question mark at the end. Because it's a question.
It's a question, right, right, right. So, I just have to clean that up, but--
But then, Scott, you added the sentence, no new amount to be raised from taxation.
I want to strike that. I don't want to, I don't want to add that. That's my opinion.
All right. The attorney was okay with that.
But he recommended not having it.
He doesn't like either. But he said that if you, if, I told him about the Budget Committee's request that we include that language, and he said, since that is approved language by the DRA, that that was okay. And I think even in what he put here, what he put was with this sum to come from unassigned fund balance, et cetera, and he was, if you read it, he was okay with what the Budget Committee had essentially requested.
Which is to strike the last line?
No.
To just leave it?
It was to leave it, just, it was okay to put no, no new amount is--
Right, from taxation.
Raised by taxation.
So, what is everybody's thoughts?
I, I think they may not know what the sum is to come from, the unassigned fund--
fund balance surplus. I mean, what does that mean? But when you say, "No new amount to be raised from taxation," then they know that this warrant article isn't going to increase the taxation. I think that's the clearest line.
And if I may, where's the other side of it that says, "If you say no," I just, I'm not advocating for either side of this. I'm just saying, if we're gonna say one side, why don't we say the other side, which is, by the way, if we don't spend the money, it may just go back for taxes that have already been raised. See, we were inferring one thing and not inferring another thing. I agree, that is an accurate statement. It's already been raised.
See what Rheta's saying. It's a little clearer for people.
It's education, is what it is.
He actually does mention that as far as the education. He says, "If it's removed, the intricacies of how fund balance is determined, how and when retained, unassigned fund balance is treated, can be explained to voters in material prepared for the meeting." I don't think there's a deficiency with the communication at all, but I think it's a challenge for us to get that information out. As we've said, I don't think people understand. So if we remove, if we're talking about removing things, it seems like that puts more onus on the education, and we're already tackling that, so.
So where do you stand on adding that extra sentence, or not adding that extra sentence?
You mean adding the?
"No new amount to be raised" is a new sentence.
No, it's not.
No, it's not. That's, that's standard.
It's been in there in the past.
That's been there, yeah.
The last.
Not in ours. It's been in the town.
Nope, it's been in ours.
It's been in ours?
I've gotten it when I was.
Yep.
Oh, okay. I thought it was new.
It was added, I think it was, Jared, what, two years ago? It definitely was last year.
We definitely had it last year.
It definitely was in it last year.
All right. We're being consistent. I thought it was new.
So is everybody good with how it's written without taking anything out? And if you want something taken out, it would be the last sentence?
I'm fine with that one.
I prefer it says, "Raised by taxation," period. That way, we know that's an affirmative action by our legislative body, but I know that, I've said that for seven years, and nobody agrees with me. That's what I say.
Anyone else? So.
What about the amount?
The amount, that's, yeah, that's, three hundred, four hundred?
No.
I do agree with what Jared talked about.
I agree we have to stick with the three hundred.
I agree as well. Scott and I talked about this. We're both in agreement.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment, though?
Yeah.
Regarding our overall budget, because this came, I'm also aggrieved with reducing it to three hundred thousand, and I was at that meeting, it's like, we've gotta kind of do that. But I just wanna reiterate that when the budget, our overall budget comes to us, we've already done a lot of, not, we, Brian and the leadership already does a lot of cutting before it even gets to the budget committee. We're saving them some time there. So I think comparing to other budgets that are done in a different strategy, you know, we should do this because the town's also going to do this. It's like, yeah, we've cut a lot. But anyways, I agree that we should reduce it to three hundred thousand.
All right, so that is later in the agenda, 'cause we still have the rest of our committee stuff, so we can do motions later, unless you guys wanna do it now and be done with it. All right, so we'll just move on, and we'll do it when it comes up. All right, so moving on to the committee. So Jared, Budget Committee, is there anything left there?
Everything that has been said has already been said. Just reinforce, public meeting is on the fourteenth, so I imagine that most of us are gonna be there. I imagine that I'll probably be doing the presentation during the public hearing from the budget committee to the audience. So we have that. And then, we need to talk about doing our deliberative session. I don't think that's on our calendar. I know the town's already put their deliberative session out there.
Oh, we have our dates.
We do? We publicized it, but I think it's gonna be the night of our typical school board meeting, Monday, the.
Well, 'cause we had to coordinate with them on our date, their date, our snow date.
We have to coordinate with the town on the snow dates, basically.
And we also have New Boston. We have to do the same week. So we've got it right now that it's the week of February one.
The first week in February.
Yeah, it's the first week in February, and, and our date is that Monday evening.
Select Board's on Tuesday.
Select Board's on Tuesday. We have New Boston on Wednesday. So we did, do we do Monday, Thursday for the snow day? Which one was the snow day? 'Cause we have to do New Boston. Do we do?
So Monday, with Tuesday as the snow day.
It's giving a day, and then the following day is the snow day.
So our snow day is the Tuesday?
Is the third.
Is the Thursday.
It's the Thursday, and then New Boston's snow day?
That's New Boston's problem.
Yeah.
No, no, that's our problem. It's our problem. But no, so we have, there is a budget
meeting tomorrow, as stated. Should be a relatively brief one at six o'clock here.
Yeah.
If we do pass the CRF deposit warrant article, I think if we move that to the budget committee, I've already talked about it there, so we can at least move the public session during the meeting tomorrow.
All right. So tomorrow, the budget meeting's at six?
Tomorrow, yeah, at six.
Okay.
Don't know what the agenda is. And then the big one is just the public meeting, which is the following Tuesday.
And that's January fourteenth. That's six, and that's here.
That is gonna be in the auditorium.
Oh, that's in, okay, that's on the library. All right, so that's in the theater. And then the deliberative, school deliberative is Monday, the third. What time? Does it start at six down at the theater, and then we come here?
Did we pick times?
I believe you're gonna have a board meeting before, and then go off, like we do every year.
A board meeting here?
Yes, and then go off at seven o'clock.
And we'll look as we get closer, whether we have agenda items, if there's business that the board needs to conduct.
A and F will not meet that even.
Right, so we'll figure maybe six here for school board meeting, and then deliberative at seven?
Yeah.
That's what we did last year.
That's what we did last year, some, some version of that.
All right, just so people have it in their calendars, but we'll confirm more. All right, so we all know about the public hearing. Anything else with budget?
No.
Okay.
But the public hearing says they're gonna be in this room?
No, Jared says.
I think it's, I think it's in the theater. I don't think it's here.
It's usually in a theater with the projector that you can actually see and stuff.
I'll, I'll circle back with the admins over there.
Over in Heber.
Yeah.
I think it's usually in the theater.
Okay, so our, our snow day, so the third, February third is gonna be our deliberative session, which is a Monday. Our snow day will be the fourth. So if we can't go on Monday night, we go on Tuesday, and then the town gets bumped to their snow day, which I believe is Thursday.
Planning my ski trip around, so.
Just, just two, Scott. I thought there was three of them.
Totally.
Okay.
And Jared, you're good tomorrow night, obviously.
Jared, do you want Mr. Gross or I to be there? Do you see any need for us to?
I mean, you guys work the crowd. If there's questions, I know that, or I'd actually say any school board member. If there are questions, you know, I'll try to answer them if the chair allows me, but I know that you've traditionally moved around into the crowd to talk to people as well. If you don't do it, that's okay. I think as long as school board members are there to engage with the public, I think that's okay as well.
Is that for the hearing, or tomorrow?
Oh, for tomorrow? I'm sorry. I was thinking the public hearing. Tomorrow, yeah, you guys don't need to come. I got that.
All right.
My bad. I was thinking, I was thinking the big one.
Everybody's got the public hearing on their calendar. All right, so C and E, Ginny.
We have not met, and we will be meeting on January thirteenth at seven PM at the SAU.
All right, thank you. P and C, Rheta?
Yes, P and C met this evening, and we had a very lively discussion about a possible Facebook page or another communication channel. We will continue to work on this, and to get it into a form that we can bring to the board. We also discussed possibly moving this to the retreat as well, as part of a larger, a larger discussion. We are also, will be working on the awards videos that will be presented at the, at the retreat. And then, one.
At deliberative.
I mean, not retreat, deliberative. I'm sorry, it's.
Contagious, I know.
And one other thing, I just wanted to, I bring this up periodically, but the New Hampshire School Board Association does webinars, and there's one that's upcoming on the fourth, so if we don't have a snow date, it will, and it's on navigating the three oh six rules. These are the new standards, the guide for New Hampshire school boards, and it's from new to one. So we have a subscription, so if anyone's interested in that, I recommend going there. Very informative. Our next meeting would be February third, but I think we gotta cancel that.
Yeah.
So, sometime in March.
Thank you, Rheta. Policy, Shane?
Thank you. The Policy Committee will meet next Monday, January thirteenth, at five-thirty at the SAU offices.
Great, thank you. Technology Committee, Dan?
Technology, we're meeting in two days, Wednesday.
Oh, really?
Four PM, SAU Central Office.
All right, awesome. Thank you. And Superintendent's report?
Thank you. A few updates for the board. I wanted to let you know that we had our SAU safety team. We met on December seventeenth, and we welcomed our new captain from Goffstown Fire, Tim Lavoy, to our safety team. So we were pleased to meet Tim and to have the chance to work with him. We just had a mention to this, but the ED three oh six rule changes that were approved by JALCAR, which is the Joint Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, we were a little surprised to learn that there are some new course requirements for graduation. So we're looking at some changes to the program of study. We're looking at some new additional new courses that are gonna need to be offered, and some of these were not really part of the, the public, I would say, awareness. So despite the fact that I was watching the ED three oh six process very, very closely, and went and gave testimony to the state board, there were some things that I hadn't heard, that we're gonna have some new courses that we need to offer. So C and E will hear about this, and we're gonna have some, some changes that we need to make. And as I recall, they're for the current seventh graders. So we're looking at a requirement that we have one more year before we have to put them in place, but a couple of the courses that we're looking at, Mrs. McCann is recommending that we consider piloting as an elective course for next year, but we'll hear more about that when we get to C and E. I wanted to let you know, in your individual board packets, you have a copy of a job description for the elementary dean of students. I think I mentioned to the board that when we provided job descriptions and some updated information about administration to the budget committee, it was pointed out that we did not have a, an elementary dean of students' job description, and I shared that that was accurate. So here it is. We worked on it over vacation week. That's FYI for you. I wanted to let the board know that there have been over a thousand bills filed as part of the 2025 legislative season, and right now, two-hundred-and-sixty-five are being tracked that pertain to public schools in New Hampshire. That's a lot of bills. I wanted to offer to this board, if you were interested in inviting our state reps and our senator, and ask them to come talk to us about legislation that they've filed, and to have the opportunity to share some of the priorities of the board. So if that was something that you wanted us to, to coordinate and to schedule, we've done this in the past a number of times. Sometimes people come, sometimes they're not able to, but I wanted to offer, if that was something that the board wanted us to reach out to our state reps and our state senator, to invite them to come talk about legislation that they've filed, and any outstanding issues that the board may have.
Or any other legislation that they are.
Any legislation, whether it.
Sooner, sooner than later would be, because the session is starting.
It's starting now. So the committees, these bills are starting to move through committee. So Mr. Gross and I talked about this. If this was something that the board wanted to do, I think we would target probably early, like, early February.
After deliberative?
Yeah, probably after deliberative, but we don't have a lot of time, to Dan's point. So if that's something.
I think it'd be a good idea, because I know one of the bills that I've seen is against testifying against bills that are coming up. So I think that's something that would be useful to talk to reps about.
Rheta?
The, if we're going, I'm in favor of doing that. I think it's really good to, to get their input and also have the opportunity for an exchange. I mean, they're representing our town. It would be helpful for us as a school board to know which bills ahead of time. If there's some, you know, do we read all two-hundred-and-fifty-six of them, or there are ones that are of interest? So, you know, if we could get links out to those bills in particular, if there's any kind of summary.
It's too early in the process. We, I just, I know we won't be able to provide that. At this point, I think the two-hundred-and-sixty-five bills, it's, it's daunting and overwhelming. I would say, I think we should ask what bills they've, they've submitted, what bills they've been a sponsor for, and then I think, hearing us talk about, you know, even if the legislative priorities of this school board are making sure that the state meets its constitutional obligation to pay for an adequate education, and to talk about funding for things like building aid. And, and, you know, we've talked a little bit about, we talked certainly at your retreat last year about the building aid process. We have an entire school worth of kids in portable classrooms. We have no full-day kindergarten. For us to implement full-day kindergarten just for classrooms, we, we, we need ten classrooms to do full-day kindergarten.
And a gym, and a cafeteria.
Yeah, I mean, so, okay, but so, is the consensus of the board to try to get something scheduled? Maybe the second meeting in February? What do you think, Scott? Is that?
Yeah.
I mean, that gives us enough time. We'll reach out to them this week or so.
Give them time, too.
Give them some time. So, okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted the board to know that Mr. Kohler, Mr. Gross, Mrs. Kohler, and myself did a new safety video that we released today. So thanks to Scott and Wendy for their work on that. I wanted to give you an update on the high school principal search. So far, we've received eleven applicants, so I'm, I'm excited about many of those applicants. We also had ten parents submit their names for the committee, and we are going to choose four of those randomly, if that hasn't happened yet. And I wanted to let our board members know Jared, Jack, and Lauren are on the committee as well. So we'll look forward to that process starting very soon. And my last piece is, I wanted to let you know, over the Christmas break, our lock installer did one installation at Mountain View Middle School to assess the process, the timing, the tools that they need, et cetera. It took them about an hour to do one, but of course, anytime you're doing something new, the first ones are gonna take a lot longer than once you've done it a number of times. But we are slated to do the final installs at Mountain View over February vacation, and because I've shared with the board, our installer is not able to do the other schools. We are working on costing for that. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has, or anything I can clarify.
All right.
Thank you.
I do have to share with you that I did get an email from the installer today. I brought it up at the A and F committee meeting, that the gentleman was asking for some sort of recognition, or a letter, or something with respect to his donation of.
Time, time and labor, and.
I will share with you that both myself and the superintendent have written letters like this for folks for tax purposes, reasons, et cetera. We don't have a policy for sponsorships, promotions, signage. That is, that's part of what I, I gave you. So I, if, unless the board instructs me, or the superintendent otherwise, I can provide this gentleman with a letter, which would basically state, you know, an approximate value of the services that he would be providing after it is done. But in terms of any type of advertising, signage.
I don't think we can do that, but I'm also comfortable sharing that this is Jacob's Ladder Contracting out of Goffstown, a great local company. We haven't worked with them before, but we appreciate the donation of the labor, the fact that they're willing to do this for free, is a terrific service to the community. And many thanks to James from, from Jacob's Ladder.
Did you have your hand up on?
No, I'm sorry, I was scratching my face.
That's okay.
I did, I made eye contact. I did. I made eye contact. You see what I did it to.
All right, so anything else on a Superintendent's report? All right, moving on. We have no old business, so now we're over to the new business. So motion to recommend move the 26th budget to deliberative, but we're not gonna do that until after the hearing, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. How about the CRF deposit, not to move to deliberative, but to approve it with the writing for the hearing, right?
Do we ever motion to make it 400,000? I don't remember.
No, we never, I don't think we did.
I think it was a general recommendation that we walked in with, but I don't believe there was a motion.
I'd recommend we, we do 300.
Yeah, so do you want to make a motion?
Do we want to make the motion tonight to offer a 300,000 to the Budget Committee for them to take to the deliberative?
To the public hearing?
To the public hearing.
To the public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah. I, I make a motion, we direct Jared to let the Budget Committee know that the school board is on board for a $300,000 Article III for the CRF.
And the language?
However it was presented this evening.
Okay.
As presented.
Got all that, Denise?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I have a motion by Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
By Rheta. Any further discussion? All right, C and N, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, student, yes, opposed?
No.
Check one, abstention, or opposition and abstentions. No. Okay, did you get all that?
Yep.
All right. Okay, so, Mountain View Middle School, we already talked about the laptops.
We're gonna have.
We did, yeah.
At our next meeting, a public.
Yep, next meeting, we'll have a public hearing before the meeting on the money. All right, so staffing.
For your approval this evening, we have a technology position. This is for our data technician, and we're very pleased to welcome Jamar Starks as our new data technician.
Awesome, so I'll need a motion to approve by Dan. Do I have a second by Ginny? Any further discussion? C and N, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teacher, student, aye. Opposed, abstaining. Okay, we're unanimous, teacher, student, thirty seconds. All right.
Scott, did you get the, did the defaults make it around?
There's two copies.
I sent them to the left.
Okay, they, they reached the left.
No, your new board member was. Your new board member was slacking over here.
So any other business that may come before the meeting? We have to do the top three things?
Yes, and then I have one other thing. So I, I, I slacked a little bit, and I only have one of the three things, so I need your help. So I, I put down the data presentation as one. We had a robust conversation about the budget.
Yeah, well, the CRF, we just moved, right?
The, there was one that I'm like, oh, we should talk about this, but of course.
Maybe the third could be the public hearing at the next meeting.
Yeah, the public hearing for the Budget Committee, yeah, that's what I was trying to say. But I couldn't come up with public hearing. I was stuck.
That's all right.
Should we do something about the safety video that's been out today?
Oh.
Because people want to be up to date on safety.
We're gonna also put that, I mean, on the website and through Facebook links and stuff, so.
It was well done.
It went out by the superintendent, but we'll share it.
So I have the data presentation, the CRF adjustment to total amount, and the public hearing for the laptops.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. Any, and you, did you have something else?
Just one thing that was mentioned with the deliberative session. In the past, we had had childcare. I don't know if that's something that, that might be offered. I know it was done, was it the young business, future business leaders?
Student council.
I can't remember who did it last year.
We can reach out to Frank and Pam and see if they can.
I thought it was the Young Society, because wasn't Lily involved with that?
Brady, do you remember? Were you part of that last year? Did you watch any little kids during deliberative?
No.
They're all wearing Notre Dame outfits.
Was that all you had?
Yeah, that was it.
I don't, I didn't hear volunteer either on that question.
Is there any other business that may come before the meeting? Anyone else?
I just had to thank you. I wanted to thank Jared and Jack. I spent, and Brian, he went as well. I mean, I spent a lot of meetings with these guys.
Yeah.
And I just thought they did an incredible job.
They did.
And it makes my, every year, it makes my job easier and easier, knowing that I have really great school board members who advocate so well for this board and for the students of our community, so I want to thank Jared and Jack.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you both. You guys work well together. All right, so we do have one non-public, correct?
Should be quick.
All right, so I'll need a motion to go on non-public under RSA 91A32C, matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person.
Some will.
By Shane.
Question.
By Dan. And I do roll call.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
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 Yes, we are in non-public, so we're gonna go down.
Don't forget, you have stuff.